Let's get started. I'll talk slow. Welcome, everyone, to the Regular Board of Trustees meeting for Tuesday, September 30, 2025. Is there a motion to open tonight's meeting? Trustee Rothrock, Second Trustee Patino, all in favor? Meeting is hereby open. Could you all please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
So something that we've been doing for the last few months is having the department heads come in and give us updates what's happening with their department so that not only could the Board of Trustees be aware of what's happening, but also for the benefit of the residents of Dobbs Ferry. Tonight, we're lucky to have the village clerk who will give us an extensive review of what's happening with the village clerk's office.
Best village clerk.
That's right. And how many awards have you won lately? Your best village?
You can't keep count. Can't keep count.
Hand out of fingers.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Best clerk of the United States.
New York State Clerk of the Year Award.
There you have it.
Hey, 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 hey.
Am I getting ahead of you some?
Good evening, Mayor and Board, residents. My name is Liz Draper. I'm the village clerk for the village of Dobbs Ferry. With me tonight is my deputy village clerk, Diana Bonilla, who was just appointed in August. The village clerk and deputy village clerk are appointed by the mayor, subject to approval by the Board of Trustees. The term of the village clerk is two years, and the term of the deputy village clerk is one year. The village clerk has a variety of duties, which include maintaining custody of the village's books, records, papers, and village seal, acting as the clerk of the Board of Trustees, and keeping record of the board's proceedings. Board of Trustees' agendas are posted on the village calendar and on the village website. Each agenda item is separately linked to any backup documentation we have received for the item. That just makes it easier for the residents so they don't have to flip through hundreds of pages of backup. They can just look at the one item they're interested in and see the backup right away. Also, keeping record of the Board of Trustees' resolutions, and I post them on the village website. Those I've also set aside in a separate resolution section, again, to make it easier for the public to locate any adopted resolutions. This may be viewed by clicking on the village code, agendas, minutes, and resolutions link in the Citizen Action Center on the homepage of the village website. I also file adopted local laws with the New York State Department of State. I report incidents, accidents, notices of claim, and any litigation to the village's insurance carrier and to our village attorney. I publish and post legal notices as required, write and prepare proclamations and certificates of appreciation as requested by the mayor and board. I maintain the oath of office book, conduct bid openings as required, prepare the annual village meeting calendar, and post all the meeting dates on the village calendar on the website. I update the village website as requested or required, and send out email blasts as requested or required. That's just a few things. The clerk's office also issues a variety of licenses and permits, including garage sale permits, handicap permits, and placards, peddler's permits, film permits, taxi licenses and permits, and parking permits. The village clerk also serves as the registrar of vital statistics and maintains and issues certified copies of birth and death records of the village. The village has birth and death records on file from 1873 to present. Marriage records are also maintained by the registrar. Marriage records from 1873 to 1906 are available at Village Hall. In 1906, the town of Greenberg took over the responsibility of issuing marriage licenses, so the village has not issued marriages licenses since 1906. If anybody was married in Dobbs Ferry, it would have to be before 1906 for me to have the records. If you were married in Dobbs Ferry after that, and you want to copy your marriage license, you'd have to go to the municipality that you got the marriage license from. I also serve as the Public Records Access Officer, and I process all requests for records under the Freedom of Information law. Just a little stats. From 2015 to 2017, FOIA requests averaged 58 per year. The number of annual FOIA requests began increasing substantially in 2018 with 158 FOIA requests. The record year so far was in 2022, when we had 511 requests. Last year, we had 494 requests, and as of yesterday, we were up to 403 requests so far this year. I also am a notary public, and notarizations are provided to the public free of charge. In January of 2023, notaries were required to keep a log of all notarizations performed. In 2023, I did 326 notarizations. 2024, I did 401, and so far this year, I've done 448. From 2015 to 2020, Board of Trustees' resolutions averaged 32 per year. In 2021, we started adopting resolutions for almost all board actions, and the number of resolutions also increased drastically and continues to increase each year. I won't give you each year, but in 2020, we had 51 resolutions, and so far this year, we're up to 229. So that does involve a lot of work. It's, like I said, they're posted separately in a little section on the website, and, you know, just preparing, signing, it's a lot. So increasing, you know, from 50-something to over 200 is a lot. Our village elections are run by the Westchester County Board of Elections, and I do work closely with them each year to get information on early voting, for primaries, and for the general election, and get that information distributed via email blast and post on the village website. So that is all I have for now.
Thank you very much, Liz. That's a lot of work on behalf of the village. Thank you. Do people need an appointment to make it? Just have things notarized, or they just walk in?
Can you come, the change in the resolutions, Laurie Lee, could you speak to that about how many more resolutions we have, or why that might be?
Sure. In the past, they would just make a motion, and that way, it was hard to keep track of what actions were taken unless you combed through all the minutes. So by providing a resolution for every action and vote, it assists Liz with the minutes and also assists the public in understanding what business of the people is being conducted at each and every meeting. And that was a change made, I think, when interim lines joined us, and we've been drafting detailed resolutions, and the department heads have been participating in drafting those as well. So it's much appreciated in terms of having to go back to find resolutions.
Yeah, it's been easier for me lately, when I took the three years I wasn't on, to find things of late.
Correct. Yes. And if you, yeah.
Noted, but it's been a lot more work.
As Liz has indicated, those resolutions are readily available, and she files them on the general code website with their assistance. So it's worked out really great.
I have a question about the foils, because, you know, obviously, it's an important part of transparency in government, but the, you know, multi-fold increase is, you know, seems a little odd. Are these, are these coming from a dispersed number of residents, or are we getting a high concentration from a very?
No, it jumped up a lot during COVID, because I think people were just home and, you know, doing projects. I don't know.
Could have come to meetings.
But then, we also, there was also a change made that when somebody wanted to request a copy of the police record, that they used to fill out a form via the police department, and the police just handled that. But then it was decided that it would all be handled by foil. So in addition to what, you know, usual stuff, then we had the police records on top.
What percentage of the increase, you think, is, can be attributed to that element of?
It's probably around 40 to 50%.
Oh, okay. That's interesting. So, so a large part of the increase?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So most of the increase, actually, is. Okay. Thank you.
It's, again, it's another important process to assist Liz with finding out who's asking for records, what records, who has the records. It's, it's an important part of keeping sort of a running total of who's accessing, what they're accessing, and we can go back and check to see. Oftentimes, you know, it's attorneys or potential plaintiffs' representatives that are reaching out for these records. So, and many times, they need to be redacted if they involve juveniles or confidential witnesses, or if there's an ongoing investigation. So I get involved with assisting decision-making by the police department and the clerk's office.
I would add just one other thing. I'm the foils appeal officer. I don't know if those numbers include the appeals. Like, if it gets denied, that it gets appealed? So that's like, it's like doubles up on those kind of numbers. And I believe the trend locally and maybe nationwide is basically higher foils is, you know, required. Quizz of minds want to know. So we have to answer each and every one of those in a certain timeframe.
Okay. Thank you, Liz, for that. That's, that's one of the reasons why we'd like to have department heads come in and tell us what they do, because I think the majority of the board is surprised by the number of FOIA requests and the increase in the resolutions, and how it affects the amount of work that you perform. So thank you. Next is a resolution to appoint someone, so let's move forward with that. So someone has applied to become a member of the nominated committee. Nominated committee has reviewed their application, spoken to them, and they've advised us that they recommend appointing someone as a member of the nominated committee. So is there a motion to appoint Joanna Golden as a regular member of the nominated committee for a term of one year, as recommended by the nominated committee? Trustee Patino, Second Trustee Rosenberg, all in favor? That passes unanimously. We want to thank Joanna for volunteering. We know how much effort and time that takes, so we appreciate that, and thank you for, for efforts. Next is a public hearing, and I'm going to need a motion to open this public hearing. So is there a motion to open a public hearing regarding the leaf blower law? Trustee Patino, Second Trustee Rothrock, all in favor? Public hearing is now open. We have been discussing this for a bit, and I think what we had noticed had the wrong date, as far as when it became effective, and then we resubmitted it. Is that what happened?
No, we, we actually opened a public hearing on a draft of a similar law on June 24th. You conducted it and based on comments that you had received and recommendations by your trustees. The hearing was not concluded, and the law was pulled and has gone through a number of other discussions. So this is the draft of the law based upon your consensus on September 9th, and it does contain a January 1st, 2026 sundown deadline for gas-powered leaf blower use in the village, and it also contains what you had requested in terms of penalties for the violations of this provision in the code.
Okay, so just for the benefit of the public, I'll, I'll just highlight some of the key parts of this, and anybody else can add something to it, and then we'll have the public speak to it. So what this does, as our village attorney has alluded to, is that effective January 1st, 2026, no person shall operate, use, or hire any person to use, operate, or otherwise permit, or cause the use or operation of any gas-powered leaf blower in the village of Dobbs Ferry unless the Board of Trustees shall have acted to authorize such use. So that means that as of January 1st, 2026, it will be illegal to use a gas-powered leaf blower in Dobbs Ferry. Nearby villages, some of them have already instituted this, some are instituting it, so I think the timing is right on this. And what we've also spoken about are the violations of what, what's the, you know, what happens if, repercussions if people do this. So it would be punishable by a fine of $50 for the first offense, $250 for the second offense, and $500 for each subsequent offense in the same 12-month period. For purposes of this section, the term "person" includes one or more from among the responsible parties, including the owner of the property or the tenant or occupant at the property, when such person is responsible for landscape maintenance of the property, and the party that owns the landscape business or employs the operator of the leaf blower. So those are the key components of, Laura, as I see it. I don't know if any of the trustee wants to highlight any other areas or speak to this. Jerry, since you're grabbing the mic first, I'm assuming?
I just want to add that we do this, or when we do this, that we print up palm cards, for lack of a better word, that homeowners can have and give out to their gardeners, and also that we can put into places that people could pick them up, you know, whether it's Village Hall, the library, different, different parts in town, give them out, whatever, whatever. But we have to get this into people's hands, and it has to go to the homeowners as well as the landscapers. And I think it should also be in English and Spanish to make sure that everybody fully understands it, and we should take it upon ourselves to, to, to really promote this. And so it's a very easy thing to understand, you know, and everyone can get it.
I, I agree, and I think we all got a note from, from Rob Baron from Sustainable Dobbs today that reiterated the fact that, that Sustainable has designed or mocked up some signs that we can put around town, just, you know, the standard, you know, signs with the, on signs, that Hardsley did very successfully, some, some code changes around leaves, I think, that, that they made, and Irvington did also around change to, to leaf pickup in the last few years. So there's, there's a lot of ways that we need to communicate this. It is something with significant penalties associated with it, both to landscapers and homeowners, and we need to actually come up with a, a plan and put some money behind implementing, implementing that plan. Not a lot of money, but, you know, just some to, to make sure that, that enough people know about this and are talking about it so that, that nobody has the excuse to say, like, I never knew.
Okay. Any other comments by the trustees?
I just want to thank the Sustainable group for all of the work they've done, and I'm sure we're gonna allow the public to discuss, so I know that you guys can say things when the time comes. So I won't speak for them.
Okay. Anybody else from the board? Okay. Anybody else want to come up and come up?
Hi, everybody. Thank you. Matthew Giorsey, Chair of Sustainable Dobbs, and appreciate your consideration of this resolution. We've been working on this for a long time, a long time coming, so we're happy to see it finally, hopefully, coming to pass. There are a couple of things that just want to bring to your, bring to your attention. One is, as far as the communications, we do have some grant monies that we've, we've gotten over the years for communications for this. So the idea, our ideas that Irvington has done, I think Hastings has done as well, is to print up door hangers and going to be distributing those to each and every house as best we can throughout the, throughout the village. As Matt alluded to, the lawn signs as well. And then to that, a, one of the, one of the pieces that we were hoping would be under consideration is a registration for landscapers and companies. There are other villages that, that have those, have that in effect, understanding it's a little bit more bureaucracy, but it is, you know, it would be free, and from our perspective, it gives each landscaper and each company a clear, you know, a clear notion of what the, what the rules are, what the law is, makes them sign that they've learned and know and are therefore kind of attesting to the fact that they have seen and are aware of them. Maybe that's something to be considered down the line, moving forward at a, at a future meeting. As well as one other stipulation, understanding that the electric leaf blower, you know, so the, the rules of them, of gas leaf blowers being banned, and everything else, and, and the penalties also being, you know, amended. But all the other stipulations within the code stay the same. Specifically, there's, there's two exceptions in the code, namely that, you know, golf courses, municipal and school employees are allowed to use gas leaf blowers within 100 feet of any residence, and utility, and same, the municipal and educational staff can use them in times of emergency. So, again, moving forward, hopefully, those stipulations could be considered as being amended as well. But for tonight, obviously, just getting gas leaf blowers banned as of January 2026, I think Sustainable Dobbs is, you know, a win, but open to your consideration for those.
I had thought that, I did not know that this section included exemptions for the municipality or the schools.
It's already in the code.
So what happened is it's in the code, it's not in our changes, and what I, they brought it to my attention. If we wanted to change that, we would have to push this and do another public hearing, because that is a substantial change in that it impacts golf courses, schools, everything. So we, as a board, can decide tonight if we would want to do that and push it again, or approve it as is. And then I also wanted to point out that Hastings is not yet discussing their terms of how they're going to change it. So I, I thought it's possible, if we wanted to see what they do, and if there's anything else that we also wanted to reconsider in addition to the exception. And also, they already have a registration in place in Hastings. I was interested in the idea of having it, like, either piggybacking on theirs somehow, or, like, working with them to explain our, both of our laws at the same time, to the same, because most of the contractors are similar people. They're probably treating, you know, it's like, pointing to Dobbs as well as Hastings. All of that's to say, either we can decide to move forward tonight with what's there and know that we're putting a pin in the exception and potentially trying to work with Hastings on some sort of registration, and also seeing what they do to try and make sure we all still align as best as possible.
Got it. Yeah, no, I think personally-
Or we could decide to push it tonight, and then talk about right now, or talk about at a workshop, what it would mean if we were to restrict it. Because, like, the whole, the whole thing with how it's written, it's a noise ordinance.
It is.
Right. So it's, it's written in terms of noise primarily, not in terms of, like, the emissions from a gas-powered leaf blower. So the noise ordinance is saying it's fine within 100, what, meters, yards, feet, something, distance from your neighbors, because it's not bothering this, in the sound. And it's not necessarily about the emissions coming from gas. So the reason why it's in there like that is for that reason. So it's kind of like us, and I don't know, Laurie Lee, if it makes sense, if the reason that we're considering it is more about the environmental impact of the gas. Does that change where it goes in the code? It just seems like it opens up a box of things to discuss, and also it would push it to another public hearing, because it would have a different impact.
Right. So I think that we should just do what we have for us today, and then we could workshop the other thing. And I want to thank you guys for all the work that you've done. And we did discuss the registration, and I think the majority of us decided, let's get this piece done first, and then we could look at, you know, what, because we didn't want to create more bureaucracy and more registration. But if we have to, we have to going forward. But I think, let's just get this done now, and then we could go forward with it. So that, I think, was the mind frame, mindset of most of us. So, again, I want to thank you for all the work that you've done. I think if we're all, you know, I won't stop, but I just think if we're all okay with that, we'll just go along with that.
I'm, I'm fine going ahead with, with this, but I don't think we should wait very long before we do, because we, this looks a certain amount of hypocritical to, to exempt ourselves in the school district.
I'm not sure we can cover the school district. I'd have to do that research. Many times, the school district property is exempt from local regulation. I know they're exempt from zoning regulations, so it would require some more, some more research on that particular aspect of it. And also, you'd have to be budgeting for replacement of existing equipment at the DPW, and I don't-
We have been doing that, you know, and, and Stephen, do we have, have we moved completely away from gas leaf blowers yet in the village? We have. So that, so as a functional, as a practical matter, the village has taken our own exemption and tossed it away. But the, but if you can do the school-
But schools is also, schools is what it says. But I don't know if that, it says golf course and schools. I don't know if that's Masters and Mercy, or just, it's just schools, so it's not, like, specific, and that could use improvement?
Yeah, I think, I think from the beginning, the impetus was to get a deadline in for the sundown. And originally, we had been giving ourselves an extra year, and then I think it was some trustee Patino's suggestion that we could move that up to January. So there is one more period of fall cleanup that they'll be able to use gas leaf blowers if you were to consider this and move forward tonight. That would be the last opportunity for the use of gas leaf blowers on private properties.
Okay, Patty, you had something you want to say?
Yes. First, we've been talking about this for a long time. I remember when it first came up, I think there were Buffalo, as far as the eye could see. But we really, we really want this to get done. We want to move forward. You, you've got everything set in good way. Obviously, there's some issues that still need to be addressed. One of the big ones, I think, is who is going to be the enforcement officer? Is it going to be the police? I've heard people say the, the building department, and I've said, please don't do that, because they already have too much work to do, and they can't get things done for us. So, so the police is the right place for it. So please do it.
Police are who responds now to these complaints, and I believe that they should continue to be, because unlike the code enforcement officer, they are tooled up, from the building department.
Yeah.
They are tooled up to be able to respond quickly to people calling in with, with problems anywhere in the village. So-
We just want to provide as many code enforcement opportunities as possible. The code enforcement officer happens to be out doing an inspection of XYZ, and the landscapers, you, you want to be able to issue a violation.
I'm not suggesting that the code enforcement officer can't issue a violation. I'm suggesting that when people see something and want to report it, they report it to the police, who can respond in the moment.
Okay. Anything else, Patty?
That's it until you.
Okay. Anybody else want to comment on this?
I mean, I just think this took a long time for us to get here, and so I think this is a good first step, but it doesn't mean that it's going to be the end. This is the beginning of a way to try to fix this issue. So we should move ahead.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to say, I think the, the golf course piece is particularly egregious, because it's not a public, like, it's a private club. And so I would like to see that, you know, there are additional steps taken. I did, because I'm more into this, I did have a question. I guess maybe this is for Laurie Lee, but if the code enforcement officers, if they, if it's a building department, can, do they, do they have someone furnish an ID? Which, my question goes- Which my question goes back to like the registration piece, right? So if they, they ask someone, they would know who they're writing the violation to?
Correct. We, we did discuss the appropriate persons to be responsible. And so without the registration, they will have to seek that information separately in order to be able to issue the violation. And a violation can only be issued on actual knowledge. It can't be based on a complaint. It has to be observation or within earshot. It, it can't be, a complaint came in and we, by the time we got there, they were gone. So it's maybe letting the homeowner know with a warning in that circumstances the appropriate way.
Anything else? Anybody else in the public want to speak to this? Is there anybody online who want to speak to this? Yes?
Hi there. Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Great. Daniel Berg is 52 Los Angeles Road. I think I spoke to this before. I would like to thank everyone at Sustainable Dobbs for working on this and thanking all of you trustees and hopefully voting on this. I'm totally in support of this. It's great for the environment. It's great for the peace and quiet of residents enjoyment. And communication, I agree, is very important. I was just talking to a neighbor's landscaper this week who was using his gas powered law and illegally, you know, because it's not October 15th yet. And I, you know, he, you know, they are prepared. He actually had his electric one on his truck as well. So it's good that, you know, we had that already in, in place and, you know, just communication really important to get that across to the landscapers. So really appreciate this. It's also great for people who work from home and so on. And, and I agree, the, the golf course should be included in this too. Just the other day going, going for a walk at seven o'clock in the morning, I'm like, it should be peaceful and not, you know, they, they were using gas powered leaf blowers, you know, pretty early in the morning as well. So thank you everyone, really appreciate it. It's, it's good for the village, good for the environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? No? Okay. So is there a motion to close the public hearing? Trustee Rosenberg, second trustee Galen, all in favor. Meeting is hereby closed. Now, is there a motion to adopt a local law to amend chapter 234 of the Dobbs Ferry Village Code, peace and good order to establish January 1st, 2026 is the effective date for the prohibition on the use of gas powered leaf blowers in the village and establish penalties for violations? Trustee Patino, second trustee Nell, all in favor. That passes unanimously. So thank you again for your work on this. Thank you again. You guys did a lot of work on it, so thank you. I'm going to give you a chance to leave, so. Go quick.
Get out while the kitten's good.
Courtesy of the floor.
Patty.
Patty.
So I was looking at my watch and I realized, don't shake your head, I'm trying to be amusing. Add some levity to it. We are at a time of the year where I really should have come to a couple of meetings before this and reminded people that this Saturday is going to be the Ferry Festa again in Dobbs Ferry. Everybody's very excited. There've been really good people working on this. I think we've got a lot of vendors. I think things are coming together very well. And I think the mayor is going to deliver on a really beautiful day.
I'm just checking the weather as you.
Be nice.
It's supposed to be wonderful.
It's sunny. Look at that, no rain.
Perfect. Way to go. If people are still, you know, questioning whether they can sign up, they can. We can still take signups. If anybody, if anybody wants to sponsor more, we have plenty of room for sponsorships. So we're hoping that everybody comes down and has a really great time. And this is a wide open, this is, everyone is welcome.
Patty, can I ask you a question?
Of course.
A resident got in touch with me recently and asked whether there were any sponsorship or booth discounts, not sponsorship, but, but booth discounts for senior citizens who wish to have a booth. And I didn't know, I told her to talk to you and I don't know if she did, but if she didn't, I would love the answer so I can get back to her.
Yeah, I mean, it all depends on what they're doing. It really, well, no, it does because we have, we have exempted. We've exempted not for profits and people who are doing things like committees in Dobbs Ferry.
Our committees can do.
Right. So if they're a member, you know, like Abby Canet and I talked today about what they have to do with the seniors and they don't.
This sounds like it's a, some sort of retail thing, not a, not a not-for-profit.
Well, the best for them to do is to talk to me.
I will reiterate that then.
I'll do what I think makes sense and then I'll have to pay the difference if it's wrong. That's fine. I want people to participate. I don't want them hitting hurdles.
Okay. Thanks.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. Anybody else for courtesy of the floor? Anybody online? Okay. Action item number one is a discussion, I mean, is a resolution regarding the police department purchase of police vehicles. And the workshop, we discussed authorizing the purchase of one Ford hybrid police interceptor, but then tabling the purchase of the Ford Expedition until we got more information. So we're going to separate that. And so is there a motion to allow the police department to purchase a 2026 Ford hybrid police interceptor SUV, all wheel drive, with the purchase price of, well, I just have a total here, right? It's outlined in the, in the memo.
Yeah, but the, the refitting of the is lumped together. Do you have?
So it's in the memo, it's in this as it is. So is there a motion as I just laid it out? Trustee Galen, second trustee Rothrock, all in favor. That passes unanimously. So we got your one now and then you'll come back with the information on action for the second vehicle. Okay? Action item number two is to consider a, the accepting the resignation of Clay Kaminsky. So is there a motion to accept the resignation of Clay Kaminsky, Clay Kaminsky to the traffic committee? Trustee Rosenberg, second trustee, you know, all in favor. That passes unanimously.
If I can just express as the liaison to the traffic committee that Clay has been an invaluable member for a lot of years and has done a tremendous amount of, of work, not just in the meetings and discussions where he's been the secretary and taken minutes for, for the traffic committee for some time, but also for getting out onto the streets and doing things like counting crosswalks that don't have curb ramps, which is the subject of a recent grant application that we've made. That was all his work, doing draft designs that we presented to, to our engineers for the new crosswalk at Virginia and at Gould Park. And I just want to say that we will miss Clay from the traffic committee a great deal and thank him very much for his hard work. The reason he's resigning is because he has become a magistrate judge. So, and that apparently is a conflict of interest. So he has taken himself off the committee, but we, we will miss him and we appreciate all of his work.
Yes, on behalf of the village, we do appreciate that. So thanks, Matt, for expressing that. Action item number three is for the authorize the village administrator to execute an IMA with the county of Westchester for the electric vehicle charging station. So Rob, can you give us a little background on this? Because this seems to have been going on for quite a while.
Yeah, thank you, mayor. Yeah, what you have in front of you on the handout, this is the, the latest version I received late Friday. The other, that you see in the package was actually a placeholder. We're reviewing this. It's of course, uh, subject to, to Laurel Lee's review and approval. Basically it's $618,000 plus of the equipment, plus furnishing and installation of 34 total charging stations. Basically it took a while for the county to catch up and this is a, it's in a place where I can bring back to the board with the, with the final information. This is the, it's the final version of that document. There'll be two ports on Cedar Street, 22 ports at the train station lot and 10 ports at the village hall parking lot total.
What's the cost to the village on this, Rob?
Uh, I think they mentioned it was like a $4,000 charge because of the ones on Cedar. It needed some extra wiring, which, that, that, that just became a wear last week.
But aside from that, this is totally free to the village.
Correct.
So we're getting more than $600,000 worth of equipment for the cost of $4,000.
Good deal.
Plus installation, yes.
We do, it, it does look like, in reading this, it does look like we have some ongoing maintenance responsibilities, which, you know, are probably, you know, generally de minimis. And I'd just like to remind the board that we have to take up at a, at a, an early date what we are going to do about implementing pricing for use of these because it will be power that is coming through the village account and we have to figure out how to come close to, you know, whether we want to break even or, or mitigate risk or eat some. We have to, we have to discuss that so that we can program them appropriately once they're in.
Yes, we do. It's a big factor, you're right. And Rob, what is the estimated date that these, these stations will be installed?
Um, I keep hearing as soon as possible. They keep changing the seasons every time I ask. This is supposed to be installed last year, so I can get a better handle on when to expect the actual work to be included and be completed.
Okay.
Can I say, so it'd be great to get that, Matt's question on a workshop discussion sometime soon and also the signage, because we'd said that some or all of these will be EV preference, but not EV only. So we need to figure out a process for deciding which spots are like EV only versus like, please only use this spot if there's no other spots and you don't have an EV. Like we, we're going to need signage for that. I'm now realizing that we need to deal with that.
Yeah, we have an EV parking.
But that's not going to be implemented for.
I'm sure we could find examples that exist.
Right. And we want a lot of places that have EV spots have special, the, the spots themselves are a different color. So we need a plan for implementation, not only on the charge, on the charges, but on the communication at the point of interaction with the spot. So I don't know what the process should be for that, but we need one.
We should have that in the same.
But can I be just like work through the park mobile app?
It's not about, it's not about the meters. It's about, so if, if at where we now are going to have a charging station, some of those are going to be for EV cars only and some of them.
I get that part. I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to find a way that we don't like overburden the sidewalks and the parking lots with like a million exercises. So like is there?
I mean, it could just be a sticker that goes on the, on the charger, like we just need a plan and like we need to decide who's in charge of coming up with the plan, whatever the plan is, so.
So we should, we should have that and the pricing at the same workshop.
Both of those should be the same workshop.
Yes.
Do you want to talk more about parking? It's my question though. Maybe we could add more. We could redo the parking again while we're at it. I figured that's what you were getting at when you said that maybe we could just do it through parking.
Okay, so let's just move along on this. So is there a motion to authorize the village administrator to execute an intermunicipal agreement with the county of Westchester for electric vehicle charging stations? Trustee Rosenberg, second trustee Rothrock, all in favor.
Just ignoring me. What am I talking about?
Never. That passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Action item number four, did we agree to 10 o'clock, nine o'clock? What did we agree to?
Nine o'clock.
But this is Cedar and Main, so it's different.
Oh, so this is going to say the same?
I don't, I don't know.
God bless you.
We didn't, oh, two blocks. Yeah.
Two blocks till nine?
This is Cedar and Main till seven. And you voted at your workshop of two blocks on Main Street.
Nine o'clock, two blocks.
Nothing was ever seven though, right?
So is that a separate?
Seven is Cedar. Why is seven Cedar if trick or treating is six?
Because it ends at six. And then they fix it between six and seven. So we're saying it's closed. So this is a street closure from two to seven.
Right, that was the thing that they close it down.
Got it, sorry.
Can you authorize a street closure on Main Street for, for?
So this has to say two and additionally two to 10.
But they're saying we already authorized that.
You already authorized that by vote at your work.
Great.
Okay, so I don't have to talk about it. All right. So is there a motion to authorize the street closure of Cedar and Main Street for the annual trick or treating event to be held on February 31st, 2025 between the hours of 2:00 PM and 7:00 PM?
Oh, he just wants me to get it.
Second trustee Rosen Asher, all in favor. That passes unanimously.
And the mayor, will you be wearing a costume this year?
Someone was asking maybe. Oh, it was, uh, the downtown committee wanted to do something with the mayor dressed and the board of trustees dressed.
I think that's a great idea, just, that's my vote.
Can you bring this to your swat?
I don't remember that. Maybe.
Not all members of the board of trustees are going to get into costumes under any circumstances.
I have butterfly wings, I'm in.
On that issue, can I also just say?
You could go as a cranky middle aged guy man.
We should.
I have this like cat ear thing.
Oh my God.
Trustee Galen.
The two, the two hours, the two hour street closure is the very minimum that we need because we need to clear vehicles off of the, just saying for the record that the reason we have a two hour window before the trick or treating starts is because it takes a long time to clear the vehicles off of Cedar and Main for the Halloween thing. Everyone watching at home can know, but that's why it's going to be closed. Two out, two full hours before the trick or treating starts.
But only two hours.
Okay. Is there a motion to authorize a street closure for 33 Maplewood? I shouldn't say them. Is there a, is there a motion to approve a street closure on Maplewood Avenue on Saturday, October 25th, between the hours of 1:00 PM and 8:00 PM with a rain date of Sunday, October 26, 2025? Trustee Rosen Asher, second trustee Rothrock, all in favor. That passes unanimously. Action item number six, we have been discussing a change or modification or a clarification of our communication policy for quite some time. We workedshopped it a few times. We came up with, I thought, good ideas. I want to thank trustees Nell and Rosenberg and Galen for their efforts on this. They did a really great job on it. So I think we're ready to move forward with it.
You just have to make sure that all the revisions you asked for and make sure they're included, so.
You want to give us the highlights of this?
Yeah.
Sure, yeah. You know, the, the, the goal here has been to be as open and transparent about, you know, the decisions made in this room with this many people in attendance, to make sure that, that all of that is as public as possible. And so we looked at, at how to do that from a number of different angles. One was how to update the website to be a lot more functional and a lot more sort of modern and accessible through search and the way people are used to interacting with, with websites. It's been some time since our current website has been renovated and there've been, you know, big changes in, in user expectations since that time. So we will be looking at updating the website. I believe that the administrator's office has already started to do some work on that. We're going to change the way we deal with allowing people to subscribe to emails, whereas right now you can subscribe to, you know, once and you get an awful lot of emails that you may not be interested in. And that's a, an inhibition to people wanting to stay on that list. So you'll now be able to choose the things that you are interested in. We're going to change some of the ways we do newsletters, add some, take some away. We are going to, we have a process now around being a lot more timely with emergency statements and statements from the board on policy, inclusive of making sure that we are translating a lot of what we do into Spanish. And, and in how we, how we deal with social media, we're, we've sort of been winging that and we are. We're, we've sort of been winging that, and we are going to, we are codifying that in this, in this policy. So those are the, those are sort of the big headline things, like, all the details are in the materials. If anybody wants to read the resolution, it's available on the website, where Liz said it would be, or it will be tomorrow, or after Liz gets to it. And, and all those details will be, will be there for everybody to read. But hopefully, they won't need to read it, they'll just feel it.
Okay, thank you for that, Matt. So is there a motion to adopt the village communications policy as allied in the proposed written material? Trustee Mel, second trustee Rosenberg, all in favor? That passes unanimously. So I want to thank you again for all the work that was done, and we finally have a policy that was done. Is there a motion to close the offices at Village Hall, Department of Public Works, and the village court on Friday, October seventh, twenty-twenty-five, for records management? Trustee Rothrock, second trustee Rosen Asher, all in favor? That passes unanimously.
Can I just ask about, is that something that happens every quarter? Like, how often does that...
Uh, once or twice a year, on average. The good news on that level also is that now that the drainage issues have been repaired at the embassy basement, we just, just put in a new sump pump in addition to all the water that used to just enter the building on the side. That's all now piped towards, should be, it's not getting into the basement. So basically, we're taking that big green tank from Memorial Park, taking all the archives back inside with shelving, and so that's gonna be part of the, part of the operation.
Great.
Didn't we, trustee Galen just mentioned this, didn't we once authorize the digitizing of all of those records?
Not the digitizing, but the cleaning of them.
And that wasn't, that didn't include digitizing them?
No, they're, they're in boxes, as far as I know.
All right.
That's a different grant.
I think that's like an archive grant the state offers once in a while.
Well, if it comes up, it'll be great to do that, so we don't have to spend a lot of square footage on record storage.
Okay.
Except for all of the birth announcements since nineteen, eighteen seventy-three?
All the FOIA requests.
Some things are mandatory for hard copies.
And that's why we did discuss that, the digitization, and there were those elements, if I'm not mistaken, Liz, were, we had, we have to keep them. That's why we clean them, and we couldn't just scan them and throw them away, we were required to maintain them.
Okay, action item number eight, is... Is there a motion to authorize the village administrator to execute a renewal of the intermunicipal agreement with Westchester County for participation in the Westchester County Mutual Aid and Rapid Response Plan? Trustee Galen, second trustee Rosenberg, all in favor? That passes unanimously. Action item number eight, is, nine?
Number nine?
All right, nine. Is there a motion to authorize the village court to apply for a justice court assistance program grant in the twenty-twenty-five through twenty-twenty-six grant cycle? Trustee Rosenberg, trustee Galen, second, all in favor? That passes unanimously. All right, we need a motion to schedule a public hearing with regard to the cable franchise renewal agreement. So, as way of background, this is something that we are required to do, and usually, last time it was a ten-year, I think a ten-year term. Things have changed, obviously, since then, so let's have, we have to have a public hearing on this issue.
Mayor, may I interrupt for a second and, and say, like, there was some back and forth between myself, with everybody copied on, and attorney Dan Posen about this. This strikes me as something that's not yet ready for a public hearing, that we should potentially table until Mr. Rosen can come back with a more fully negotiated...
Posen.
Posen, sorry. I sometimes mess up names, too. So, the, the issue that, that, that I raised on reading this was, this is an, an agreement with Verizon, and we have a terrible problem with bandwidth in the downtown with Verizon Mobile. Now, this is not Verizon Mobile, this is Verizon as an ISP and cable service, but I thought we have some leverage and we have an opportunity here while we're negotiating agreement, an agreement, to try to work with Verizon to improve the bandwidth, whether it's through their mobile operating unit or as hotspots through their ISP unit in the downtown. I don't know whether that's feasible or not, but Altice does, which is not a, an independent mobile provider, they don't have towers, they provide mobile hotspots to, to customers. So it strikes me that it's, it is a possible thing to do, and for, and Mr. Posen said he would go back and try to arrange that. So on the theory that he succeeds, or that we should give him time to do that, I think it would be advisable to table this until we have an update from him.
What's the date of the hearing?
We have to schedule a date, I mean, this date was scheduled for, I don't even see it here, do you? No.
Nope, it's got a blank.
It's got a blank.
But we would have to notice it with the actual agreement on it, so if the agreement is gonna change...
No, you don't.
We don't have to, we don't have to notice it.
Well, when it's on, when it's on the agenda for the public hearing, you should have the information available, but I guess what I'm suggesting is if you give it four weeks instead of two weeks, you might...
Get it.
I know he, Mr. Posen, I was on the email that Mr. Posen responded and said, I mean, he was willing to go back and make that request, but in certain cases, they, you know, the cellular doesn't talk to the...
Fine, but, but this is an opportunity that we're, if they need this agreement, we have leverage to, you know, ask, you know, without necessarily begging. So, so I, I don't, we can schedule it and give him time to do it, and then, you know, I want to fully understand the, the consequences for not having this agreement, both to us and to Verizon.
Verizon doesn't pay franchise fees if you don't have the agreement.
Okay, but if they don't...
So have they not paid in ten years? Or...
They have paid.
Yeah, they're paying, we're paying at the rate.
This says it's ten years out of date.
But it's ten years out of date?
They're paying at the rate.
It expired in twenty sixteen, looks like.
This is a new rate, this, well, like, we're just negotiating a higher new rate?
Right.
So the longer we wait...
For a five-year term.
Got it.
And Dan's gonna pass along the request to see if that hot, because Altice does the hotspots, so I don't think everybody was copied on the, the advice that Dan had sent to you, but he was suggesting, I think it was just Rob and myself and you...
I wish you...
But I think he was suggesting that he'd take back that information to see, to see if, if it was possible to include that coordination.
So is the feeling, what, do you have an answer by October twenty-eighth, or...
If he doesn't, then you can postpone it again, so you can, you can set, I would suggest you set a hearing, because it's important to be...
That we can always change.
Moving this forward, and you can change or table it, or adjourn it to another date, pending negotiations.
I think we should give Dan some time, and we shouldn't rush it to the fourteenth. I think we should give him an extra couple of weeks, if we can do it at the meeting on the twenty-eighth, I think that would be better.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm sorry, I thought everybody was copied on this, so I'm, I'm just forwarding it to everybody on the board now.
All right, so is there a motion to set a public hearing day for October twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five, to address the cable franchise renewal agreement between the village of Dobbs Ferry and Verizon of New York? Trustee Rosenberg, second trustee Mel, all in favor? That passes unanimously. Action item number eleven and twelve are giving step increases, and this is pursuant to longevity and, right, is that correct, Rob?
Uh, yeah, their, their one-year step increase. I don't know if Jeff includes longevity, I don't think, I don't think they do that one.
The anniversary date of their appointment.
So it's the one-year anniversary.
Okay. So for number eleven, is there a motion to authorize a step increase for recreation assistant Christopher Zepriano, and the amount of, this increase will go from, will result in an annual salary of fifty-nine thousand, one hundred thirty-five dollars and seventy-five cents, effective retroactively September tenth, twenty-twenty-five? Is there a motion? Trustee Patino, second trustee Galen, all in favor? That passes unanimously. Next item, is there a motion to authorize a step increase to Gino Bruno? Her salary will be eighty-one thousand, five hundred ninety-one dollars and forty cents, effective retroactively to September tenth, twenty-twenty-five? But I just want to, and September tenth, she was still considered?
It was prior to her leave.
Right.
There were a few days overlap with the payroll.
Okay. Trustee Patino, second trustee Rosen Asher, all in favor? That passes unanimously. Action item number thirteen is to declare a nineteen ninety-seven? Wow. Okay, so is there a motion to declare a Department of Public Works nineteen ninety, is there a motion to authorize the Department of Public Works to declare a nineteen ninety-seven Mack twenty-five-yard packer truck as surplus? Trustee Rosen Asher, second trustee Rothrock, all in favor? That passes unanimously.
Doesn't happen anymore, like, what's it been?
Served us well.
Is there a motion to consider a resolution approving the audit of claims submitted and recommended by the village treasurer? Trustee Rosenberg, second trustee Galen, all in favor? That passes unanimously. Do we have any trustee reports? Trustee Galen?
Just want to second what Mr. Stein Schneider said about the FerryFesta this weekend, looks to be a great one. And I also want to say that this weekend, we will, it will also be Wicker's Creek Market, which is the Dobbs Ferry-based vintage and antiques market on Sunday, and as part of that, for the first time ever, and you all are probably hearing about this for the first time ever, we will have sailing opportunities off of the Dobbs Ferry docks, thanks to the schooner Apollonia, which is an incredible freight sailboat that's anchored in Hudson, and it's coming down to Dobbs Ferry just to take around residents and talk to them about the Hudson River and wind sailing, and there's gonna be, hopefully, someone on the shore offering some educational information about sailing and about the Hudson River and biodiversity. So I think it's a, this is something that we've been working on for a long time, is doing a better job of activating our connection to the Hudson River, and this is hopefully just the start of what will be a very exciting bunch of...
It is exciting, good to hear it. I forgot to make an, an announcement, I'm appoint, I have to make an appointment. I'm appointing trustee Mike Patino as the liaison to the Parks and Recreation Committee. I forgot to do that. So that's, Mike Patino will be the new liaison to the Parks and Recreation Committee. And Laura, I haven't given you any liaison jobs yet, so we have to work on that, but this one was a little, was more pressing, so, sorry about that.
No problem. So I think, I believe it's on the rec section of the website, you can sign up to...
There's already a waitlist, I looked at it.
Oh, there is?
Yeah. I tried to sign up, it was already a waitlist.
Yeah.
That's great.
We need some more dates for that.
Well, listen, it, you know, now that, now that we've done it once, hopefully, it's something that we can make happen again, so...
One day, like, hours.
It was like, like, one hour.
Yeah.
Really?
That's fantastic.
I just, you know, I can get my email back.
We don't need a bigger boat. Yeah, it's a very, it's a, even if you are not, if you are not one of the people sailing, it is such a beautiful, beautiful sailboat, so I definitely recommend coming down, talking to the captain and the crew about the work that they do, and learning more about the Hudson River and experiencing it from that angle, so, thank you, thank you to Kendra for making it happen.
Sounds great, thank you. Um, trustee Rosenberg?
The traffic committee met, and nothing really substantive, but I do want to also commend our newest police department liaison, Brian Rafa, who's done an outstanding job of getting up to speed and filling the considerable shoes of Josh Poznick. So, so thank you to Brian.
Thank you, Mayor.
New York Forward is gonna be at FerryFesta with a table, and they're gonna have a bunch of projects for everybody to come give feedback on, the things that are still being considered for the slate to then go to the state for their ultimate decision. And then they are also gonna be having a workshop on...
Monday, the sixth.
Monday, October sixth, here, here, or at Embassy?
Embassy.
Embassy Center, in the evening. So come and see us. Check your emails.
Trustee Patino?
The C A B has volunteer opportunities Sundays in October, November, the fifth, eleventh, nineteenth, and twenty-sixth of October, and then the ninth, sixteenth, and twenty-third. A lot of that is invasive species clearing, there's some pollinator garden trail maintenance opportunities, it's fun, it's a great group of people, and it's a good way to get your hands dirty. The planning board has a, reviewed some comprehensive plan ideas that they want to present to our board, so hopefully that, that went over really well, they're really excited about that, some of those, that presentation, and I'm hoping that comes on our workshop in the very near future.
Bill Fett, can I go back? I'm sorry, I always remember after. Thank you to Jess, because you represented all of our village projects at, so at the New York Forward LPC thing, we are, you know, Vinnie and I are on it, and Dr. Gupta and other, there's fifteen people, everyone's on it, and then all of the projects are presented by like the people who propose them, so the private ones all come up and they do song and dance, and then we have to do our own for the village projects that we all approved. But Jess basically like had to just do that all herself, and so she did a great job, and I want to thank you for doing that, because that was like half the meeting, so, but they all are still in consideration, the LPC didn't kick any of them out. I think there's still seven million dollars and change worth of projects, oh, Laura was there too, I'm sorry. And so we're supposed to submit a slate of six to eight million dollars, so we're already kind of in that, so it's, it's looking good, I mean, then it's up to the state ultimately.
Yes.
And one of the private projects is, private projects is still the library.
Yeah.
Which is sort of public-private, but it's being...
They did a great presentation.
Treated as, they did a wonderful presentation, yes.
Trustee Rosen Asher?
Um, it is Hispanic Heritage Month, so I know that the Human Rights and Diversity Committee put out a statement about that. It goes from September fifteenth to October fifteen. That's really all it got.
Trustee Rothrock, I haven't given you anything, so you've got another pass on that. Is there anything else, Rob, that the village people should...
Village people. You're backtracking a few years.
That's who the downtown committee wants us to dress as.
Village people.
Actually, not in here, I have something I have.
Actually, before you jump, I just want to, again, commend our great clerk for the great work that happens day in and day out. Great asset, and I don't think she ever goes home, so, thank you, Liz.
Yes.
I have an update. As of this afternoon, I received an update from our surveying consultant, who has been trying to satisfy, for a long time, the requirements of the Department of Transportation regarding the acquisition of surplus property to be used as parkland, as you know.
Chancery Park?
Yeah. It's just, it isn't a named park at this point.
Right, but like...
Please, we need to get it first. It has to be completed, the work has to be completed with the New York State, and then it needs to be sent back to the county, because there was something called a reversion in the deed, original deed, from the county to New York State. We've hit another roadblock, unfortunately. DOT has now revised its regulations, and they are now starting to enforce these regulations, and they are very stringent rules about preparing plans and documents, and Ward Carpenter has been diligent in trying to respond, notwithstanding these coming over-the-top rules. So it is ongoing, it is unfortunate that the DOT is, is causing this now, yet again, another roadblock. As you know, we have to provide to them proof that none of the property to be reverted is within a certain distance of the travelway. We did the survey fieldwork, Ward Carpenter completed that, and they found about twelve-hundred square feet, a small triangle, that has to be carved from the property before it goes through. back to the county. So that's, we've been wending our way. Now DOT has come back to say, I don't want that map. I want these maps. And there's five pages of them. So it is working. It's moving. It's slow. But again, the DOT is, is being pretty militant in requiring adherence to these new regulations. So I just wanted to provide that update because I know oftentimes I get contacted by your committees. This application to acquire this property is five years ago. So it's an unfortunate turn of events, but that's the update.
Thank you for that. I know we have been waiting a long time. I know Mike can build some work on that as well. So if there's nothing further, is there a motion to close tonight's meeting? Trustee Rosen Asher? Sure. Trustee Rothrock, all in favor? Meeting is hereby adjourned.